Okay, roll call.
Trustee Markart.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne.
I, here.
And trustees Takaoka and Shank gave prior notice that they would not be in attendance.
Okay, would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? The pledge allegiance to the flag. To the flag. Is there a motion to appoint trustee Cook president pro tem?
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be president pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second it.
Motion is second, roll call.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
First item is citizens wishing to address the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board on something we're not going to cover later? Okay, hearing none then. Our next item is under the village president's report, we have a proclamation for centenarian Stanley Spiller. And the proclamation reads, "In recognition, Stanley Spiller, for military service during World War II and earning centenarian status Vernon Hills." Stanley Spiller was born in De Pue, Illinois, on March 9th, 1924. Stanley resides at the Victory Center in Vernon Hills. Stanley moved to Chicago at the age of six and graduated from Sinmetz High School on June 6th, 1942. On September 12th, 1942, Stanley enlisted in the United States Army. As a private first class, Stanley became part of medical detachment of the 357th Infantry Regiment, 90th Infantry Division, known as the Tough Ombres. Stanley participated in many major battles, including the Battle of the Bulge as a medic, in which he was credited with saving many lives. Stanley participated in the liberation of the Flossenberg concentration camp. And due to Stanley's heroic service in support of operations in the vicinity of Paktun, Germany, on December 6th through the 10th, 1944, Stanley was awarded the Bronze Star. After the war, Stanley returned home and completed his education through the Army, becoming a dental technician, which included ownership of a dental lab in Chicago. Stanley was married to his wife Grace and for 49 years. Together, they raised four children, four granddaughters and five great-grandchildren. On Saturday, March 9th, 2024, Stanley turned 100 years young, joining the most exclusive club in Vernon Hills, the Vernon Hills Centenarian Club. Therefore be it proclaimed that Roger L. Byrne and the Board of Trustees do hereby express our sincerest appreciation to Stanley Spiller for his service to our nation and congratulate him on entering into the Vernon Hills Centenarian Club. And declared that Saturday, March 9th, 2024, was Stanley Spiller Day in Vernon Hills, dated this 19th day of March, 2024. And I think some of the families here, so do you want to come up? And you can get this and if you'd like to say a couple things. And this picture is from when some of us were at the Victory Center.
Thank you very much.
Last weekend, and it was an incredible celebration that day.
Thank you very much for honoring my dad on behalf of our family. Thank you, we really appreciate it all. Thank you.
And here's your copy of what I just read. Take home and frame order. All right? Our pleasure, our pleasure. Thank you.
And the banner itself will be formally presented at a future meeting when we're presenting all the banners.
Oh yes, yeah, and Stanley will have, yeah, that banner that you see in the picture there will be one of them that we put up this Memorial Day and it will be up from the Memorial Day to Veterans Day in November. John, did you want to add that?
That's correct. It was a wonderful day. We thank you to trustee Cook and trustee Dr. Oppenheim for joining staff, the chief, and our communications team as we celebrated. There's a picture right there and giving Stanley his crown and having him join the most exclusive club in Vernon Hills, the Centenarian Club. It was a great day. The invitations went out to the family yesterday and along with staff and the board. That on, so the 21st, we're going to be meeting right across the street with the Legion, where we have our welcome reception for all the families and all the veterans and service members. And we'll walk on up here and that's when the presentation of all 20 banner recipients for the class of 2024 will be presented. And it's with Stanley in one of them. It's going to be another amazing class, so it's an exciting time. So thank you both trustees for joining us on that day and to the family, it's been wonderful to meet you. Todd, you want to say anything about that?
It was quite an honor to be there for Stanley's 100th birthday, as you can imagine. If you've ever met a World War II veteran, it's tough to walk away without a lump in your throat. And birthday party or not, it was one of those days. So as trustee Oppenheim said, he never thought he'd be putting a banner up to honor a centenarian, but here we are. So we're looking forward to that and as well as the whole crew on May 21st at the Muni Golf Course across the street. Just be, we're very proud to be a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to add a couple things.
Sure.
First of all, I understand he's the first male centenarian that we're aware of in Vernon Hills.
Yes, sir.
So it's an extremely exclusive club. Extremely. And I just wanted to add that when I was first adjusting the idea of the banners, it was not to diminish all of the efforts of all of the other veterans that we have in active duty, but it was especially to find those who served in World War II so gallantly. So we're very happy that we could honor him. And I also wanted to ask the family if he's told you what his secret is. How has he survived?
My father, Stan, I'm Cindy, his daughter, he says, "Never stop moving."
Never stop.
And he was a runner his whole life.
Ah, okay.
Till about 83 years old, so.
When I saw him last week, I was honestly amazed that he's still so spry. Even though he's in a wheelchair, he still looks amazing for someone.
Walker, no wheelchair yet.
Oh, that's right, he was in a walker.
Yeah.
He wasn't, he was sitting down, but he was in a walker. And it was phenomenal.
It's a challenge.
Understood.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you for being here.
And he loved hearing the song, was it the "God Bless America" twice?
Yes.
He loved it, he loved it so much, we did it twice.
Say it again.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that was great. It was a great day, it was fun. Anything else on that issue? Okay, then. Next item, chief, I think.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to point out to the community and village board that our own Dan Mead, everyone knows him as the school resource officer at Vernon Hills High School, was honored at the Chicago Wolves game two weekends ago, or weekend before last, and got to stand out on the ice with Wayne Metzger as he sung our national anthem. And it was really touching for Dan and we're all proud of him being recognized as a hometown hero. And I think we're very lucky to have him serve the community. Thank you.
Yeah, it was a great moment because I didn't get to go to the game, but I watched it on television and they, it was, you know, it's quite an honor, so congratulations to Dan. Okay. Public Works Director?
Yes, I just want to quickly call your attention to item G on Omnibus. This is for the purchase of LED streetlight fixtures. This is in line with what we talked about in the capital improvement program back in January and then again in our last budget meeting. Since there's a long lead time in receiving these, six to eight weeks, we wanted to go ahead and try to move this order. We won't be taking them until the next budget year, so this is just a purchase out of the fiscal year 2025, in line with what you saw in the capital improvement program, so.
What is the lead time?
Eight weeks, six to eight weeks. So before the busy event season that hits Public Works in the summer, you know, we might have, it's usually a good opportunity for us to do some of this work, so we would love to have those materials on hand.
Okay. All right. Anybody else on staff have something? Okay. Then the next item is the Omnibus Vote Agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through J?
Motion to approve items A through J.
Second. Motion is second. I just had a question about D, that everything looks good on this ACE, on the ACE pickleball conversion and everything?
Yes, the ordinance includes all the conditions of approval from the prior ordinance. And the way that this was phrased, removing the reference to the elevation changes, we replaced that with the proposed elevation plan, which is to basically just refresh with the gray paint color that you see in the packet.
And it looks like from the drawing, they are going to be able to get 16 courts in there.
It does look that way.
And plus a singles court, so.
Yeah, the space plan that they provided does appear to fit.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from anybody or questions? Okay, then hearing none, a roll call, please?
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markart.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. There is no unfinished business, correct? Okay. Under new business, the approval and passage of ordinance 2024-30, an ordinance awarding the putting green and short game contract to Holonbeak Construction for an amount not to exceed $342,819?
Yes, so back in January, Kemper and Village brought to the board some options for the putting green and short game project, received direction from the board to go move forward with the design that was chosen, create construction documents and go out to bid. So on March 6th, the Village received two bids for this project from Holonbeak Construction at Midwest Golf Developments. And this will, this project is going to be in next fiscal year, they're planning to start in June. And so Kemper's here to answer any questions you may have about the project, but this is awarding the construction project to Holonbeak Construction.
Did anybody have any questions about it, or? I mean, we've, you know, been over it quite a bit, there's a drawing of it. Yeah, and we've talked a little bit about depending upon what they do there, we may be able to use some of what's there. And we've talked with Kemper about some other things with the course where this might be able to tie in if we need to use dirt or whatever, you know. So. When would we start work on this, do you know?
Mid-June? End of June.
End of June, okay, all right, all right. To be open next year then, right? Yeah, because we've got to give it a full season, correct? Yeah, yeah. All right. Any questions, comments?
No.
Okay, then is there a motion to approve ordinance 24, 2024-030?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please?
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markart.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Anybody have any communications or anything they wish to share?
No.
Okay, then I want to entertain a motion to adjourn the village board meeting, go to committee of the whole?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are adjourned. And we'll start the committee of the whole in a second, we'll let some.
Give them a moment to step out.
Like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Is there a motion to appoint trustee Cook president pro tem?
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be the chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Motion carries. First item is the approval of committee of the whole meeting minutes of March 5th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call, please?
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. Second item is Anton Parr, 600 Hickory Hill Drive, review of Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations, variations related to required parking and parking stall dimensions, Director Jennings?
Thank you. Just by way of a reminder, this project did come in front of the committee of the whole about a year ago. The project team has been in technical review since that time and had their public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission a few weeks ago on March 6th. The project is a 30,000 square foot office and industrial building, which would be located on this property. It's a parking lot that's not currently utilized, it's not serving as required parking for any building. It previously served as auxiliary offsite parking for the building to the south across the street. Anton Parr is proposing to construct a 30,000 square foot building on the property. The reason that this had a hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission is that during technical review, we observed two variations related to parking. One is the total required parking based on the mix of uses in the building. They're seeking a reduction from 85 to 65. And the other variation is from the PUD and the zoning code. There is a requirement for parking stalls to be 20 feet in length. 18 and 1/2 feet is a fairly standard parking stall dimension. This lot is currently striped at 18 feet, they're requesting 18 and 1/2 feet. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, on both the site plan and associated architecture and landscaping, recommended approval of that as well as the variations related to required parking. The commission did have two concerns. They expressed a concern with the code requirement for the required parking stall dimension. That is something that we as a staff will be looking at in the future to determine if that, the 20-foot depth and the way that it's worded without any provision for an overhang is something that we might want to modify in the future. So we will take that message from them and look into it. The other item was just to ensure that the lighting level in the northwest corner of the building, the commission noted that it seemed to be spilling over in that one area. So during permitting, they suggested that the staff just make sure that the phonometric plan complies with the code in that area. So with that, there are representatives from Anton Parr here. If you care to come up and answer any questions that the board may have.
Are there any questions from the board? Mayor?
No, it looks like a good project.
Yeah, since we've, and we've been through it once at a meeting, so.
Yeah, very nice building.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, very, very nice building.
So is the, I guess this question isn't for you, the facility to the south? Or is it going to have enough parking since they were using this?
So it was not considered to be required parking. It was a business that vacated that building several years ago. Had a parking demand that exceeded the code requirement. So they had built additional offsite parking for the number of employees that they had. But that has not been in use for many years. I could flip back to the picture, it's pretty overgrown.
Okay. So do you need a motion from us to prepare the ordinance, or?
Just the consensus to prepare it and we would bring it back for Omnibus vote at a future meeting.
Does the board concur they should move ahead with preparing the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Third item is, and I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, is it Saragim? 700 Townline Road, Unit 200, review of Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations, variations related to signage. Again, Director Jennings?
Thank you. So I will try to do this as briefly as possible. Saragim is proposing to occupy the south unit of a two-unit building along Townline Road. I put a historic photo in here just to try to provide a little bit of the context. The main variation that Saragim is requesting is related to the south elevation, so facing Townline Road. So historically, this building is a two-unit building, both units displayed signage facing the south elevation. When Saragim applied for their sign approval, just a regular sign permit, I went through the records and I did not find any explanation as to how the Bibbidi Bop sign, which is for the north unit, is being displayed on the south elevation. So the primary variation that they're requesting is actually something that the building owner and I have talked about is necessary for Bibbidi Bop to place the sign on the south elevation. So in conjunction with that, it also puts this particular elevation over the maximum square footage of signage for that elevation. So, but as I explained to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the primary reason for that is that there's already a sign that should have required a variation located on the south elevation.
I was wondering about that. So the Bibbidi Bop sign, so we never actually approved that size sign in that location?
It was approved, it was shown on the facade. You'll recall about two years ago, there was a facade change for this building to the color scheme that you see here. Both sign areas, Bibbidi Bop and a placeholder for the unknown tenant, were shown on the approved facade elevation, but there was no variation associated with it. The only variation that was approved is for the monument sign, which allowed two panels on the monument.
Yeah, only thing I can think is that came from the fact that the building already had that with Verizon and Qdoba.
Yeah, I did, after speaking with the owner, I did find that historically, both signs have been displayed.
Yeah.
I guess the only difference is with the Verizon, the Qdoba is there's not a mat behind the lettering, it's just all.
Yeah.
It's all the solid colors, so it makes it look like the sign's even that much bigger for both of these now.
And the total sign area by the code does include the backer board that both of these tenants would be using.
What to the, in these pictures here, to the, that would be to the west, where Verizon is, I believe it was on the building on the side, on the west side. And then looking at the new, basically it's just up there, "Coming Soon," is.
So the sign package for the west elevation, the primary sign, the one that you see, the larger sign here, that is a permitted sign, so they did not require a variation for that. The variation on the west elevation relates to a canopy sign. The sign code restricts the unit to having one sign per frontage, this would be the second sign on that frontage. So they're requesting a canopy sign. The total sign area between the two signs is compliant. It's just the placement of a second sign on the west frontage of this unit requires a variation from the sign code. So the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't have a major concern with either of the variations. The, following the Planning and Zoning review, the company provided to the sign, the corporation provided to the sign company, a slight modification. So what you see here, left versus right, is what the Planning and Zoning Commission saw versus what they would like to do. It's within, everything that they're proposing is within the scope of the variation. There's no additional sign area, it's just the wording of the tagline changed on this elevation. And then on the Townline frontage, they're requesting the sign that you see on the right, again, within the same sign area that was published for the variation. So if the committee of the whole is in favor, there's no need to republish for this because the scope of this is within what the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed, it's just.
On the west, that where that sign is about the "Coming Soon", the other picture of the building from the west, yeah. Is that, what's on the right side there is what's going to propose to be, correct?
What is on the right side would replace the banner, yes.
Right. And that's smaller than the banner, so it's, yeah, yeah.
So if the committee is in favor of this, what I would request direction to prepare is an ordinance that specifically lists out the variations as they are. The Bibbidi Bop sign display would be included in this as well. The fact that it is off of their unit wall and it's on the adjoining unit. So if the committee is in favor of this, that is the ordinance that I would be drafting.
Comments or questions from the board?
So if we don't agree to that, isn't that, that sign's already up there?
The Bibbidi Bop sign is already up. So the owner of the property understands that that has triggered a need for a variation that was not previously granted.
Huh. Can we go back to that other picture, the south view? Yeah, that one. And so you said in terms of.
Do we know what the Saragim sign is actually going to look like? Because this is that "Coming Soon" one. Is it going to be the same as?
The one on the left.
Yeah, that's right, okay.
It is the one on the right is what they're proposing.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
So the one, when you say current, when it says current appearance, that's what they originally proposed, not, there's nothing there.
Looking at that now, I see where that would be confusing, but yes, that is the current.
Current proposal.
Yes.
Or the initial proposal.
Correct.
And then on the left is the new proposal. And so, and you said including the orange backer for the Bibbidi Bop sign, that's what's, that is what's currently there for the Bibbidi Bop.
That's correct.
And you said that fits in size-wise, including the backer in terms of the overall sign?
So the Bibbidi Bop sign complies with the size by itself? It is located on the adjoining unit. The Saragim sign, when combined with the Bibbidi Bop sign, the total sign area is going to go over the 80, the maximum for the south elevation.
Okay. Yeah, I always thought it did look kind of big there.
But it doesn't when you see it with the, as opposed to the Saragim sign that had the red backing. I think that made the whole thing look even bigger than it does if you look at the one on the right there.
Yeah, I don't know, to me, it always seemed a little bit out of place compared to some of the other buildings that we have. Like how, what's the size of this compared to where, to the Whole Foods? On the west elevation for Whole Foods, you know, how big is that compared to this?
I could check, I don't know off the top of my head.
That's a much bigger, much bigger building than this. It just seems kind of out of place to me. Do we have other buildings that have similarly very large, other than the David Busters, which I know is sort of an exception? Other than that, I just hate to.
The only thing I can think is that it isn't that much larger than, other than you say with the backing makes it look larger compared to when it was Verizon and Qdoba.
Yeah.
Yeah. So when it was Verizon and Qdoba, that fit in overall into the code?
I know that it didn't in that the north unit was on the south wall, but the total sign area, I don't have the dimension on that.
But it had to exceed it because, you know, it was. I mean, the pictures, you can see it.
Like, did we approve that?
It was issued permits, but I don't have any record, I wasn't able to find any record of how it got to be that way.
Yeah. So we're sort of grandfathering them in some respect, too.
In some respects, I mean, those signs did come down. But yes, they're requesting approval of something that previously was displayed.
Previously was displayed, but also it's, you know, even when you look at it now, it's, it looks bigger than the Verizon one, just because of that orange backing.
Because of the orange backing.
Because of the orange backing, yes. I don't know, maybe I'm making a mountain out of a molehill, but do either of you, any of you feel similarly that?
I don't really have a that big a problem with it because especially being on 60, it's not.
Yeah.
Like it's looking, anybody looking at it other than people driving by, so.
I agree.
Not, it may be bigger, but it doesn't appear bigger, that's the thing.
What's that?
I said, it may be bigger, but it doesn't appear bigger by viewing it.
So, sorry, go ahead.
No.
Go ahead. I was gonna say, do you want a motion from us then, or just...
So if the committee is in favor, just the consensus to prepare the ordinance reflecting approval of the sign package.
Okay.
Trustee Cook, given potential for disagreement, you might want to pull the board on this one, so we have an idea of yeses and nos.
Okay. Trustee Markworth?
I'm fine with it.
Trustee Forster?
I'm fine.
Trustee Abinim?
I'm gonna say no.
Okay. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, go ahead.
So we would place the draft ordinance on new business then, given that there wasn't a unanimous consensus?
Okay. Yeah, that would go on unfinished business as opposed to the omnibus, right? Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, anything else on this issue? No? Then next item is the draft liquor code amendments, class Q self-pour license and class R strolling license?
So the class, the new liquor license classes, the request came about related to a request by Tapville Social and Hawthorne Mall for the self-pour concept that Tapville operates. Our liquor code does not have a license class that would allow for self-pour, nor does the code have a license class that would allow for strolling, taking a beverage out of the primary unit and into the common areas of the mall. So previous Committee of the Whole discussions, the owners of Tapville as well as representatives from the mall explained how they would protect against abuse of a situation like this, how they control it in other locations, by issuing a card to people after, customers after they've been age verified, and then requiring, on the strolling side of it, they would require a unique, easily identifiable cup, and then the mall's security personnel would be advised on procedures for identifying the cup. The Committee of the Whole ultimately asked the staff to draft amendment to the liquor code. This is the first time that you've seen that draft. And just, you have the entire draft in your memo here, but I'll highlight, after reviewing the way our code is written and the way that the, some of the sample ordinances from other towns that have a Tapville with self-pour and strolling, what I thought would work best would be to create two license classes. One specific to self-pour for Tapville itself, so they would be the operating dispenser for the class Q license. It would be pretty closely matching what Tapville, how they propose to operate. So very limited package sales as part of their operation. The staff could provide a mixed drink, but self-pour would be limited to beer, wine, and cider. And then again, as I had mentioned, the daily limit would be controlled by the card that they issue after age verification. So that would be specific to Tapville. The class R would be the strolling license. The examples that we found from other towns, the one that seemed to work best is a joint license where the mall, as the additional premises, would apply in conjunction with the operator. So both would be on the license application to get a strolling license. And that's where all of the strolling-related regulations would be, in the license description for class R. One other note for the committee was the, there is a introduction section before the license class descriptions start, before the class A license, that restricts a business in Vernon Hills from being primarily for onsite or on-premise consumption of alcohol. So tavern restriction, it doesn't say that in those terms. But in the review of this with the village attorney, they had suggested that we should address that. It sort of creates a conflict to have a license class that conflicts with the introduction section. So there is a sentence drafted in here that would allow for the business to be primarily for on-premise consumption under the specific regulations of a given license class.
Yeah, that's what I like to change, the unless explicitly described in the license class regulations. That gives us flexibility moving forward on a lot of potential, you know, concerns that might come up. So I like that.
And that's why, that's why the beer market had to have food in it when that came into play.
Yeah, and I like, because that allows us the flexibility without making it across the board, it can be, we can be very specific about it, so.
And the one aspect of the class Q that wasn't really discussed at the prior Committee of the Whole meeting was the Tapville does at their self-pour locations, they also do have a limited amount of packaged, so if you taste the wine, they do have it for sale at the store. So they wanted to make sure that that was clear, because it was not clear at the prior meeting. So that is part of what they're requesting at the moment.
Do they anticipate having a bartender there making mixed drinks?
So the, this store, my understanding is they would have one person staffing the store at a time, and that person would be able to mix a small menu of mixed drinks. They have some signature cocktails from looking at their website.
Okay. And I was also going to mention that the restaurant that I'm familiar with in Libertyville that has a similar pour, self-pour area, they do include a certain number of cocktail drinks that are part of the self-pour mechanism. So they're sort of pre-made margaritas or pre-made other things similar to that. So I don't know if you want to modify or ask them if that's a possibility for that not to be an option.
I did provide this draft to them to get their comments back and make sure that it was similar enough since they had initiated the request to begin with. And that is not something that they asked for in that review. I could certainly ask them if they anticipate that need.
And is this, do we anticipate this class Q being used anywhere else in the village? Or is this truly so unique that it's a one-off?
So I wouldn't say never say never, but it is pretty narrowly written to match their operation, as is the class R. The class R is pretty specific to this scenario where there's a unit in the mall.
Right. Because it's got to be indoors for, even for the strolling, so it wouldn't apply to say someone at Melody Farm wanted to say, I want people to be able to, you know, stroll around the parking lot at any time.
The draft of the class R right now does have the ability for another operator in the mall, if they do have like a class A license, it has the ability for them to join with the mall and do strolling. That's not necessary. We could certainly take that out. At the moment, they haven't asked for it. But the R strolling license is written right now that opens up the possibility that another unit could have a joint strolling license.
Okay. So is there, is there any possibility that there'd be another self-pour? The reason I'm asking is just, even if you ask them about the possibility of fitting the spot with the thing of margaritas, and they say, no, that's not on our menu if there's someone else?
I suppose it's possible. And if we were approached by somebody and the way class Q ends up being drafted isn't a good fit for them, they could request an amendment to it, I suppose.
Okay.
And the other thing as well, if there is a request for another self-pour license for strolling, we can always reject that. You can always limit the number of licenses at a particular location. So we have that ability.
Okay.
That's the reason why we don't carry extra licenses on the book.
Right, right.
You can always say no, really, in your discretion.
Yeah, I just...
Right, if somebody returns a license because they folded up their business, we reduce our number.
Reduce the number. You never keep an extra license on the books.
Yeah. So the number in our ordinance always matches exactly what's out there. There are no unaccounted-for licenses.
We create a license as needed and as allowed by this board.
Yeah.
I guess as long as you ask them and say, hey, do you ever foresee that you'll be serving anything else other than beer, wine, and cider?
And Chief, you've, you have not heard any, nobody has added anything to it to say there's anything, all your information was, it's working fine elsewhere?
Just the way I reported last time.
Okay. So you're requesting from us?
The consensus to prepare this in ordinance form, to bring it back. We would also then be in contact with the mall and the business. They could apply, we could potentially have the license hearing and try to time it so that both things are together.
Everyone concur on moving forward with this?
It mentioned signage for restricted areas. What about signage just for exiting the mall? Are they going to have on every door, like if you've got one of these cups, please deposit here?
Yeah, we had discussed that with the mall, that that would be the expectation, that exiting the mall, they would have to post signage, no alcohol beyond this point.
Mayor, any comments?
You know, other than, you know, what the chief said, we know that this has been, same situation occurs at, what, two or three other malls in the area?
Yeah.
Is it Schaumburg, Oak Brook? Where is it, Chief?
Sure, it's Woodfield in Schaumburg, it's Rosemont, the Fashion Square Center there, and then it's Fox Valley in Aurora. And I spoke with all three of those chiefs who have a different range of terms of experience, but expressed no concerns about how this company has operated in those malls.
Okay, well, that's good enough for me.
Okay.
So I support this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is the proposed FY '24, '25 budget presentation. Finance Director Lyons?
I will actually kick us off. Good evening, everyone. This will be part two of our proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. Just a quick reminder of our calendar ahead for us, we'll have, we'll conclude our draft budget discussion this evening. We will have our annual public hearing for the budget at our next board meeting on April 2nd, and we are prepared to approve the final budget for fiscal 2025 at our April 16th meeting, within our fiscal year beginning on May 1st. At our last board meeting, we covered a big portion of the budget with the general fund and our capital fund and VERF fund. This evening, we'll be covering our two enterprise funds, the golf fund and the metro parking fund, as well as our three TIF districts and the motor fuel tax fund. We're going to kick things off with the golf fund first, but before I turn things over to Kemper Sports, I just wanted to remind the board about our last budget workshop in March a year ago, we had a discussion surrounding kind of the philosophy of the golf course and how we approach planning and budgeting for the finances of the course, mainly whether this is meant to be a business or whether this is meant to be a service and an amenity to our community. Over the last year, staff in Kemper have had many conversations and feedback opportunities with the board, and wanted to share that in drafting the fiscal year 2025 budget, we've adopted the approach of while we always want the golf course to perform like a business, at the end of the day, this is an amenity and service to the community, and we do accept that from time to time, our golf course will need to be subsidized by our general fund. So we reviewed that at our last budget workshop, where we have a, I think it's a $700,000 transfer from our general fund to our golf fund this year. But just wanted to share that that's the philosophy we have for the golf fund for fiscal 2025. And with that, I can turn over to Kemper Sports for our golf fund presentation.
All righty, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of quick introductions. I think everybody knows Kevin Lind, our general manager over at The Beauty. This is Ed Jackman. Ed is Sales and Regional Sales and Marketing Director, who is pinch-hitting for Mary Kate, who is out on maternity leave. So we welcome, we welcome Ed.
And you are, just for the...
Yes, Vince Juarez, sorry, Vince Juarez, Vice President of Operations. I help support Kevin and the entire team over at the golf course. So we're going to do a couple of different things tonight. We'll certainly talk about FY '24 and overall financial view of '24. We'll talk a little bit about the considerations that went into the FY '25 budget. We'll get a little bit into pricing. I know there's been a lot of discussions that we've had with Kevin and John over pricing at both annual passes and resident and non-resident rates. We'll talk a little bit about the capital budget, and then certainly an overview of the budget itself. So FY '24, FY '24 was, is turning out to be a great year. I will say, we're looking to end the year with green fee revenues. It's $279,000, which is considerably up from FY '23. Car fees are favorable to FY '23 as well, along with food and beverage. We heard from the board last year, the heavy concentration on food and beverage is what we were looking for. So we certainly, Kevin and his team concentrated a lot on outside banquets, concentrated on bringing food and beverage into the front of the bar, and I think clearly that has paid off with a food and beverage increase from $56,000 to $80,000 in FY '24. Total revenues are projected to be about $530,000 in FY '24 compared to FY '23 actuals of $445,000. I will say that these numbers, these projections are a little bit different than what you saw previously. You know, I think we last showed some projections to the board back in January. We've had a stellar, a stellar February and a stellar March. So we picked up about $25,000 in really unanticipated green fee, car fee revenue in February and March. Drawing down to, you know, I do also want to call out really quickly the village personnel line item. You're going to see that zero here in FY '24 and FY '23, but we'll get, there will be a cost in FY '25. As we worked with Tom and Kevin and John to really, really, really capture all the expenses that go into the golf side, so we've shifted some fees to our budget for FY '25 that were previously just absorbed within the village themselves. So drilling down to an EBIT of negative $6,500 for FY '24 compared to a negative $22,000 in FY '23. So really a stellar year for the club. Just to kind of look a little bit about ADR, average daily revenue, you know, you can see the trends on greens fees have been trending in a positive direction for the last several years. We're looking at FY '24 with the ADR of $15.11 per person, per player, and a car fee ADR of $4.60. Food and beverage, again, heavy concentration on food and beverage, moving with the hot dogs and all the food and beverage being available on more consistent hours, number one, and also being a more fixed menu. Food and beverage ADR was up to $4.73 per player. Rounds dropped slightly, still up from FY '18, FY '19, FY '20. FY '20 clearly COVID year, but rounds are still hanging strong at roughly about $19,000. Revenue growth FY '24 was a 21% revenue growth. Expenses grew, expenses actually went up 9% and payroll up 12%. I called that out because when we started talking about pricing, I think it was important for us to show that expenses and payroll were continuing to rise along, really at the same rate as revenue. So as we start to look at green fee, car fee pricing, we really wanted to start taking a look at how we increase pricing to really not only keep up with inflation, but go above and beyond and really bring more to the bottom line. So we'll talk a little bit about pricing in a minute. FY '25 considerations, considerations... FY 25 considerations, consider continued revenue growth in, how do we continue revenue growth? There's been a shift in the industry as far as pricing is concerned, and I know I've talked to several trustees on this matter. But really, the industry is going to dynamic pricing and moving away from static pricing or fixed pricing. You'll see dynamic pricing in a lot of different industries, whether it be the airline industry, the hotel industry, but the golf industry has really moved to dynamic pricing as well. And then, of course, resident versus non-resident considerations. We certainly took residents into consideration when we established both green fee, cart fee pricing and also annual pass pricing. One thing that I wanted to just touch on is environmental sustainability. We're in the process of making some recommendations to the village, or we'll come back to the village for consideration on just some things that will help us, number one, reduce, reduce payroll, but two, provide some sustainability to the golf course. We're looking at autonomous mowers. You know, the, the industry has changed quite a bit in the last four or five years.
That's a picture of a rumba for a golf course, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, autonomous, autonomous mowers are out there, both for fairways and rough. And so, we actually have a demo coming up for The Muni here in Vernon Hills at the end of April. So, there'll be more to come on that, but we've been watching it for the last two or three years. I've had the opportunity to visit the Toro headquarters up in Minnesota to look at their autonomous mowers, and it, they're really, they're really very impressive. And then, of course, to continue to elevate the food and beverage side, we are looking to invest in a, in a Turbo Chef. And what a Turbo Chef is essentially a high-powered oven countertop unit. There's a lease program that we pay for while, while it's at the club, very, very minimal. But it provides additional food and beverage offerings, such as, you see a pizza up there, that you really cook from, some of it you cook from frozen, some of it you cook from defrosted state. But it's consistent food, available food all the time, and very quick cooking times. For instance, a frozen pizza takes roughly two and a half minutes, or smash burgers take about three minutes, or Philly cheese steaks about three and a half minutes. So, the ability to get food quickly and turn it around, a consistent food, is what we're looking at for, to add in FY 25. I'm going to let Kevin talk a little bit about the comparables before we get into some additional fees.
Okay, so, this is basically to kind of courses in the area and what they were charging for nine holes. The Vernon Hills, Stock Horse rates, those are basically what our floor rates would be, and we'll get into that in a couple of slides when we start talking about dynamic pricing. But as you can see, I mean, we pretty much fall within line with everybody in the competition. Certain courses only allow nine holes at certain times of the day. Sometimes it's first hour to open, so limited time we're allowing the nine holes any time of the day for some places. You might not be able to play nine holes at 10 o'clock on a Saturday morning.
So, as we, as we built the budget, we took into consideration some initiatives and some strategies, again, dynamic pricing to drive, to drive revenue, to increase our ADR, to really start making a dent in, in some of the deficit that was there. We did, we did obviously have price increases this current fiscal year, which helped quite a bit, but as, as inflation continues to creep and cost of products continue to creep, you know, price increases, you know, have to, have to keep up with that, with that demand. Food and beverage, again, additional offerings on the food and beverage side to implement the Turbo Chef. There's a picture of a Turbo Chef up there. Offers consistent product, very quick, very easy. And what I like about it the most is it doesn't require really highly trained, you know, executive chefs or chef positions. Turbo Chefs are literally a touch of a button. If anybody, and I'm sure everybody has, eaten at Panera or Starbucks, that's what you're, that's what you're, that's what those establishments are using back in the, in the, in the open area. If you look back there, there's two Turbo Chefs at Starbucks, there's two Turbo Chefs at Panera. At the Marriott facilities, if you've stayed at a Marriott, like a Courtyard, they're using Turbo Chefs in their kitchens as well. So, they're really making their way out on, front and center on the scene. And I'm going to turn it over to Ed, who's going to talk a little bit about marketing strategies.
So, the focus of the marketing strategy for the next fiscal year is really going to be on generating awareness and also engaging with the customer with the overall goal of revenue growth throughout the year. So, the website will be the focus of the marketing effort. It'll be the hub, and the spokes that we'll use to drive traffic to that hub will be, continue to be email and social media. We'll continue to do outreach, promote what's happening at the club through both of those channels. And then, we'll also really focus on promotions at the facility as well. So, both inside the facility, letting customers know what's going on with the flyers that are displayed inside the facility, and then also outside signage with the A-frame, signage to inform golfers and folks that are driving by the facility as well. And most importantly, I think throughout all of this, kind of last but not least is, we'll continue to engage with the local community. It's an important part of what happens at The Muni, and we will continue to focus on community events and make sure that The Muni remains as a central hub for the village residents as well.
So, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin here in just a, in just a moment to talk a little bit about the pricing strategy. But before I do that, just to talk a little bit about resident versus non-resident pricing. So, we do feel it's important that the residents who are, you know, the taxpayers, taxpayers receive a, a discount for golf and a discount for annual passes and a discount for playing The Muni. So, and, so one of the things that we're proposing to do here, and we've talked to several folks on this already, is to have a static pricing for the residents. So, the resident rates would be fixed prices. You're going to see that on the third line down, third and fourth line down here, where for instance, it's Monday through Friday, walking for the residents would be $22 versus 19 currently, or $24 on the, on the weekends versus 21. So, a static price on the residents, the residents always know what they're paying. The residents always get a little bit of a better rate than the non-residents. Then, what we're proposing to do on the non-resident pricing is to dynamically price the non-residents, but not, not the non-resident juniors and seniors, really the non-residents from the regular sector, and have a floor price and a ceiling price. So, the floor price, for instance, walking Monday through Friday would be $27, and the ceiling price would be 32. On the weekends, it would be $30, the floor price, or 35 for the ceiling price. So, and the way that the dynamic pricing model works is we have an internal true demand pricing program that moves pricing based on utilization, based on current weather, based on historical facility, and, and then also it has the opportunity to change price based on the competition. So, and it's not something where you see prices at 8:05, at 27, and then 8:15 at 32. It's really based on day parts and time of the day. So, it's, it's a very gradual change in pricing, but yet has the ability to move the needle quite substantially at The Muni. Do you want to add anything, Kevin?
Not going to do electronic signs like Wendy's where they can change it for.
No, and Uncle Dave, Uncle Dave is, is really a leader in the food and beverage side with that, and, you know, would love to hear Trustee Shank's opinion on that one. But, you know, Uncle Dave is moving to dynamic pricing for lunch, so, very interesting. And I will say, you know, our dynamic pricing for us is controlled not only at the site level by the general managers, but it's also controlled at the home office. We have a revenue analyst that's looking at pricing on a daily basis, and then Mary Kate on the marketing side and the sales and marketing side is also looking at dynamic pricing, or Darielle, or, or Ed is looking at the dynamic pricing on a, on a daily basis to make sure that, number one, that the prices are appropriately set, and number two, that we're able to maximize the availability to, to, to move the needle. When it comes to pricing, both green fee, cart fee, and annual pass pricing, obviously, we started the season. You know, the season kicked in at the end of February for us. We're thrilled about that. You know, we've kept, we've kept off-season prices going at this point. I know the budget meeting, the budgets don't technically get approved until the end of April, but it is our desire to, if we can, to have, to move prices as quickly as we can, implement dynamic pricing, and then, of course, start selling our annual passes. So, we, we really would, would really like consensus by the board if we can get that. I'm going to turn it over to Kevin on the annual passes.
So, our pass structure, we are proposing a slight increase. Basically, non-resident passes are going to go up by $50, and residents are going to go up 25. And that's more to, to keep in line with the fact that our green fees are going up, keeping that limit of how many rounds it should be for someone to make, make their pass worth it.
Well, noticing the, the writing numbers, does that mean that the cart fees are going to be static, or?
That was, the cart fees stayed the same at the 375 for the unlimited cart as of last, from last year, correct?
So, capital spend, I know the capital budget, I believe the capital budgets have been approved already, but, or maybe not. The, the draft capital budget for FY 25 does include a rough mower at $80,000. I believe everybody has, has seen that. The putting green at $343,000, which was just approved. The split rail fencing replacement at $28,000. The irrigation, there's three, there's three satellite, satellites, systems for the irrigation. Those are 20-plus years old. Those need to be replaced, that's at $25,000. And then, the interior sprinkler replacement at $20,000. So, I will say, you know, depending on what our recommendation ends up being on the rough mowers, the autonomous rough mowers, believe it or not, are less expensive than the rotary rough mowers. But we just, we would like to see what those look like in, in April before we make a final determination.
Well, because of the unique layout of our course, it's going to be interesting to see how the, how that mower adapts to having to go over bridges.
100%. But one of the things that we like about the autonomous mower at Vernon Hills, without getting too far on topic, is that it's all fenced in. That there's fencing around the entire property, so it's, it's safe. Yep, it can't leave. It's confined to, it's confined to The Muni. And everything's done via geo-fencing, and, and so, you know, we're told, no problem, but the proof is in the pudding, so to speak. I wanted to include this slide up here, just, I know the short game has been approved, and thank you very much. But there was, there was a, a, you know, a lot of costs that went into everything here, and, you know, the, the left-hand column, the master budget, is the budget that I showed you all earlier, month or two ago. And the right-hand column is where we're at right now with the prices that came in from Holland Beak. So, you'll see that we're pretty much right on target. I did shift the grow in in signage to the, to the actual operating budget in FY 25, and we're discussing whether or not to deduct and, and do the true removal in-house. So, we're right on, we're right on target here, and, and I think that's a, a great thing. The FY 25 proposed budget, you know, look, really looking at trends, trends in the industry, et cetera, pricing. Moving greens fees to $290,000, greens fee, which is an ADR of $15.46, which is up from $15.11. I think that's very doable, especially with dynamic pricing rolling out. Cart fees at $94,000, with, which is an ADR of $5.06, up from $4.20 in, in FY 24. Food and beverage moving to $87,000, up from 80, again, an ADR increase. And so, total revenues, when you add in annual passes, golf shop revenue, et cetera, $563,000, $564,000, up from $528,000. And just keep in mind that $528,000 does include about $20,000 to $25,000 in, in revenue in February and March, which, you know, who knows if we can count on that revenue next year? I certainly hope we can. So, a significant increase, I would call it a, you know, $60,000 increase for maybe the quote-unquote norm. On the expense side, obviously, you know, staffing, payroll's going up. Operating expenses, we expect to, to be about the same. And then, you see that village personnel number. That's us taking, taking on some, some charges from the village, happy to do so. It's absolutely the right decision to, to, to have a, a true effect of, you know, when, when the forestry team comes over and helps out, or, you know, some of the other team members come out and help out, that, that those costs are reflected in the, in the proposed golf budget. So, I'm going to pause and, and open it up for questions.
Any questions from the board? Yeah, Trustee Forster?
A marketing question, and it's a little, it's not quite budget-oriented, but I have a question in regards to the emails. You said continue to increase email database and capture rate? I'm just wondering, I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty, but I assume right now your emails are going out to existing customers who have opted in and purchased online. My other, I just am wondering, how do you plan on to increase that then? The email database? And then, the other thing just I'm wondering about is, have we ever considered and put in the budget to purchase outside zip code lists of our communities nearby and do postcards? I don't see any old-fashioned, like, direct mail in here, and I didn't know if we ever consider budgeting for that.
Yeah, so to answer your question on the, on the list serve, so to speak, yeah, I mean, yes, we have looked at, at purchasing outside lists. A lot of times, they'll limit the amount of times you can use those lists.
Yeah.
So, what we tend to do is to use our Kemper, Kemper Sports, Kemper Club database and push out some additional emails to those folks specifically on Vernon Hills, and then trying to get them to opt in. But it is certainly something that we can continue to do is to purchase outside lists at the same time. And then, as far as.
Similar to the fairways?
I'm sorry?
Similar to the fairways program that you?
Yeah, very, very similar. And the, and, and not to get off.
The fairways program is, is, they're, they're trying to promote playing. You get discounts on that and points towards potential drawings and stuff if you play multiple Kemper courses over the course of the summer.
And the frequent fairways program is coming back for 2024, calendar year 2024. We haven't announced exactly what it's going to look like yet, but I know, Tom, you probably participated.
Yeah.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
Where we gave away a driver to anybody that went to all nine Kemper Sports locations and, and played them. That program is coming back. I know there, we haven't announced what the prize is going to be at the end for those that completed, but I'm told it's going to be something special. So, the goal with the Kemper Sport, the Kemper, the frequent fairways program is to get people to go to different facilities in Chicagoland, facilities that we manage, and, and obviously, you know, get them around to each different property. So, and we collect, every time somebody plays from the Kemper, from the Kemper Club or the Kemper frequent fairways, they're obligated to opt into the email database.
Okay. And can you use social media then, the social media postings, to have links to drive them to? Are you driving them to the website or just posting? Posting, you know, on Facebook, are you driving to get them to enter?
Especially with tee times, I put the tee time link, which brings you right to our tee time page as far as looking to.
And they can opt in there?
Yep.
Okay.
And I would say too, as far as driving the overall growth of the list, it's the engagement at the point of sale.
Right.
So, really focusing on gathering the names of not just the person that's coming in, maybe the tee time, but the other street players as well. So, Kevin and his staff are working on that. And then, what we typically see as being the most effective way for outreach would be paid social media, either boosted posts and actual campaign. Because you can be so targeted, both geographic and demographic on who you're looking to reach, so what we send offers in specific areas, and then drive them back to the website to become a new customer through that.
Well, and one of the good pieces of news of having been open like we did in February and March, when a lot of other courses were not, we picked up a number of new people. Ran into a number of new people, and I know Kevin will back up people we talked to in the clubhouse who said, yeah, I've never been here before, but it's the only place open, so I came, and, and they wound up liking it. So, that, that'll help build some there.
100%.
Other comments or questions from the board on this budget? Mayor, anything to add?
It's okay.
Okay.
And the, the new practice area will be a plus in the future.
Yep. All right.
Justin Cook, I think the only other thing we'll need is, as Vince mentioned, they're looking to get going on the pricing for the 2024 season. So if there's consensus with the board to have Kemper begin with the pricing that was presented this evening for their marketing efforts.
Anybody have a problem with the price schedule as we saw it? No? Hi?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And boy, if you ever want to see dynamic pricing, check on the room rates at the Hotel Zachary by Wrigley Field when the Cubs are in town and when they're not in town. And you'll see dynamic pricing at its hugest. Or in the Indianapolis area for April 7th and 8th.
Okay.
Okay. Next?
All right, y'all take it from here. Thank you. We're going to move to the Metro Parking Fund, the Village's other enterprise fund now. Okay, so the commuter lots, made up of two lots currently with over 650 spaces. The daily parking fees, it remains at $1.75. And the prepaid parking passes, which covers two months, remains at $55. No change over the last prior years there. The Metro continues to have seven inbound and outbound trains, scheduled Monday through Friday only. So taking a look at the post-pandemic utilization of the Metro Lot. These tables display the daily parking spots sold and the number of prepaid passes sold. Starting with the daily spots sales on the left. Prior to the pandemic, the lot was recording around 121 spots purchased per day on average. We are seeing the use of the lot recover, but not yet to the levels they once were. The lot utilization in 2024 is on pace to finish the year above 55% of pre-pandemic levels. This is up from 35% in the prior year. Moving to the right, the prepaid passes are still being sold at a rate less than 10% of where they were prior to COVID. As the home office hybrid working environment stabilizes, management will be in a better position to reassess the parking needs of the commuter and propose revised pass and fee structures at a later time. This line chart just shows a number of daily parking spots sold by month for each year listed. It includes a line for the last three years and a line for the 2019 activity, which will be the pre-COVID proxy. Representing with, or beginning with 2022, the orange line at the bottom of the chart, lot utilization has worked its way up to the blue line, which represents the first 10 months of the fiscal '24. As you can see, 2024 activity is tracking about halfway between the 2022 line and the 2019 line. So the Metro Financial Lot summary, looking at the far-right column, fiscal '25 budget draft, starting at the top with operating revenues. These revenues are budgeted at $36,000, which is slightly above 2024 projected and 90% above the prior year budget. Dropping down a few lines to budget operating expense, which includes $104,000. This is an increase of 15% over the prior year, however. Looking at the two rows boxed in red, personnel and contingency, these items are new this year. After excluding those items, operating expenses went down 2.1% versus the prior budget year. The new personnel line represents cost to the village who spend time working on the Metro Lot, similar to what we just discussed in the golf, where you see a little bit of personnel cost in there. This cost is not new to the village, but is part of the efforts to record expense in the cost centers in which they are incurred incurred. The concept was discussed last committee of the whole meeting. About halfway down the slide, you'll see the line for depreciation. This line and the beginning balance adjustment line towards the bottom of the slide are now included due to converting the Metro Lot Fund to an enterprise fund. As I have mentioned in the past, the enterprise funds are accounted for and reported like a for-profit business. The most noticeable difference in reporting under these enterprise funds and a governmental fund, such as the general fund, is this depreciation expense. As capital items are purchased in the enterprise fund, the cash paid for these items is capitalized as an asset and then expensed through depreciation over the estimated useful life of those capital items. Alternatively, in a governmental fund, cash paid for capital items is 100% expensed in the year the item is placed into service, so you will not see depreciation expense in a governmental fund. So why do we account for this activity in these funds differently? The capital assets in an enterprise fund are responsible for the generation of revenue, just like in a business. So it makes sense to report the depreciation expense over the same years revenue is earned for those capital assets. As opposed to the governmental fund, which typically are funded by tax revenues and are not directly linked to the capital assets. So for the enterprise funds, then, in order to see all the activity in that fund, it is important to review the cash flows in conjunction with the income statement. In the draft budget for both enterprise funds, I have included an anticipated cash flow statement or schedule, as you see in front of you. Walking through the draft budget column on this cash flow schedule, you will see the year begins with a negative cash balance of $6,000, add-on receipts from operations and other, and subtract payments from operations and capital spending. This results in an estimated source of cash, just under $14,000, and a positive cash balance at year end. This is where you will see cash used for capital spending, as not all this cash outlay will be reported as an expense during the year. Included in the receipts from other line are non-operating items, specifically $70,000 for the general fund subsidy and $2,000 of interest income. And again, the general fund subsidy, we want to target in these enterprise funds to maintain a positive cash balance as we go forward year to year. Any questions on the Metro Fund?
Back to the expenses for? It's mostly the buildings and the grounds, that's why.
Yeah, a large portion of that is, I believe, our plowing contract, but maybe Chris could speak to that further if needed?
Yes, we pay for plowing outside services to James Morton Associates to plow our Metro Lot. And so a large portion of the building and grounds expenses is due to that contract.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to motor fuel tax, then? All right, so the motor fuel tax summary, the far-right column again here, draft budget, starting with planned revenues of $1.25 million. This is a reduction of about $1 million from the prior year budget, as this year reflects no budget, no grant revenue expected. Moving down to expenditures, you will notice $0 in capital outlay in the draft budget. As we reorganize the street and road program to be accounted for in the capital fund, MFT funds will now be transferred to the capital fund, where they will be used towards the streets and road program. And if you move a few more lines down under transfers to the capital fund, you'll see $1.5 million out of the MFT. MFT's plan to finish the fiscal year with a fund balance of $757,000. This is just a recap of the fiscal '25 road rehabilitation plan for the year, covering 4.2 miles of village roadway. Again, if there's any questions about the motor fuel tax fund or the, specific to the road plan for 2025, we take them now. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the TIF funds. Okay, beginning with the Town Center TIF. So this is the village's current oldest active TIF that began in 2002 with a frozen EAV of $2 million. The estimated today's EAV is just over, or about $27.6 million. At the beginning of the budget year, the outstanding debt will be $4.5 million. And as this TIF is about to wrap up, the last tax year that the TIF will receive increment funds from is the 2024 tax year. So one tax year left after the '25 budget. So that this means the taxing districts included in the TIF will start to begin to receive property taxes in 2025, tax year '25. Looking at the financial summary, again, at the top, budgeted revenues for the year, $2.7 million. And $237,000 of this is the village's 10% contribution to the fund. Moving down to expenditures, we do have one planned resurfacing project of a lot four. This is a village property acquired in 2021. And then we have the annual debt service of just under six, or $1.6 million. The the fund balance at the end of the year is projected to end over $5 million.
Can you go back one slide for a second?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. This is the perfect example for anyone wondering why a TIF and how TIFs work. The frozen EAV base was just a shade over $2 million. And it's now 27 and a half million. So that's the whole point of a TIF and being able to redevelop an area. What's that?
Wait till the Melody Farm one.
I know, I know. But I mean, this is just an example in a, on a fairly small TIF, you know?
Yeah, and the next slide covering here is going to take that point home again here.
Yeah.
This slide shows the property taxes generate before the TIF and estimated property taxes after the TIF by district.
Yeah.
So overall, the property generated $189,000 before the TIF. 23 years later, the same property generated $2.6 million. This represents a growth rate of about 12% per year. So Melody Farm TIF.
Yeah, it's an even better one.
Yep, so quick recap here. Again, this started 2017, so it's very young, with a frozen EAV of $290,000. Estimated EAV today, about $46.5 million. We did issue bonds to get this project going, so remaining debt at the beginning of the budget year is going to be $16.3 million. 2026 is the fiscal year in which we anticipate the TIF's fund balance will exceed the outstanding debt. So that's, that's, again, just right around the corner. Looking at the financials overall, again, starting with revenue, anticipating just over $5 million of revenue in the budget year. $432,000 of that is the village's 10% contribution. Moving down to expenses, $1.7 million for the year. Anticipated debt service of just under $1.6 million. And the $103,000 other item there is the per pupil reimbursement to District 73. Revenues are anticipated to exceed expenses for the year by $3.3 million and finish the year with a fund balance just under $12.9 million. So we dove a little bit further into this analysis. This slide shows the revenue impact of the TIF for District 73, one of the largest taxing districts in the TIF. This shows the scenarios of what revenues would, were generated for District 73 without the TIF and with the TIF. So for comparison, if we focus on the far-right columns under both headings, without TIF, the blue heading, and with TIF, the green heading, this is the estimated revenue generated under each of those scenarios. This analysis also assumes the TIF is closed early after tax year 2025. So there's two main takeaways here. So even with the TIF, assuming no development activity, District 73 was taking in more revenue per year than without the TIF due to basically that per pupil cost reimbursement. The second takeaway, by the tax year 2026, the property tax generated of $1.9 million far exceeds the $14,000 estimated to be generated without the TIF. Again, this would assume no development activity if the TIF was not created.
Yeah, that's one of the things that gets lost in a lot of discussion on the TIF is that you're not freezing, you're freezing the EAV, but you're not freezing the revenue that especially school districts can get because of the fact that you can generate a per pupil replacement from the TIF increment itself.
Yes. Yep.
And that gets, that gets lost a lot. Those numbers are pretty good.
So then this next slide is similar to the last TIF we just went over. Again, same analysis. The property was generating $26,000 of property tax prior to the TIF. And then the first year after the TIF is assumed to close, generating $4.5 million. Now, over nine years, this would, this would make this a nine-year TIF. And this is a growth rate of over 77% per year.
So so when do we anticipate this one, that the Melody Farm one? We would have the opportunity to close it early. That's what we're thinking about now? And when, and it's originally scheduled to end when?
2040, I believe. Yeah.
Wow. Yeah, because it started in, what, '17, right? So 23 years, yeah, it'd be 2040. So we'd be ending it like 14 years early.
It was a good decision we made.
Yeah, slightly.
To say the least.
Yes.
Yeah, nice job.
And just to caveat, these are projections based on the numbers we have today. So, you know, assuming everything's the same, that's what we're projecting.
Mm-hmm.
And they are conservative estimates. Okay. Last TIF, TIF number three mall TIF. Again, this TIF kicked off in 2020 with a frozen EAV of $33.5 million. Today's estimated EAV of $51.3 million. The village did not issue any GO debt to kick this project off, but we do have various sales tax notes and TIF notes built into the RDA as we go. But they're all pay-as-you-go, and they're all generated from revenue generated within those TIF properties. Looking at the financial summary here, revenue is expected at $1.9 million. Now, this is a big bump from the prior year due to about $9.5 million of EAV coming onboard with the domain. And that will also increase the village's 10% contribution to about $165,000. And then under expenses, we've budgeted $2.1 million. Really, this is just to capture the potential if the development were to hit the milestones outlined in the RDA. If we had to issue TIF notes and other items in that, that would capture this. So we're not going to spend these dollars unless those criteria are met. And it's the first fiscal year where, well, fiscal '24 is going to finish the first year in a positive fund balance. So the fund is officially going, and the general fund has been reimbursed, so. Okay. Any questions on the TIF funds?
So far, so good.
So far, so good. Okay, looking at, so there's another category I just wanted to kind of touch with the board here. The current, current financial policies have been included in the back of the budget books over the past several years. Our current fiscal '24 budget book includes the financial policies. And as I review these, I have some recommendations in which I'd like to reorganize these policies and update some terminology to align with the most current generally accepted accounting principles. Some of the policies and procedures haven't really been updated in over a decade. I'd also like to facilitate an annual staff review of the policies in conjunction with this budget process, so that way you can present any updates to the policies as needed each budget cycle. And then as when, when the board adopts the budget, I would also like to adopt the financial policies each year with that budget. One other item here in the policies, I would also recommend eliminating the minimum fund balance or net position in all the funds except for the general fund. So now, the current funds with a fund balance or net position minimum include the motor fuel tax fund, the golf course fund, and the VERF. Essentially, as the general fund is the backstop for all village activity, building a reserve balance within these funds does not really help the financial position of the village, in my opinion. And if we clear that out and we have the reserve backing in the general fund, I don't believe there's a need to build, to build these fund balances. So I guess overall, in the policy realm, I'm looking for consensus from the board before I move forward. If there's any thoughts against what I've just went through now or do I have a green light to pull this together and present some financial policy ordinances in April?
Comments or concerns from the board? Comments or concerns from the board?
Okay, go forward.
Sounds like a great idea. What what do you think the purpose was originally to have a minimum amount, just so there wasn't as much shuffling between bank accounts to make sure that they had cash flow properly?
It's hard to say. It's hard to say how how the it's really a function of the overall financial picture and vision and how we report and account for. So however that was being done in the past, they may have had these mechanisms in place to for whatever purpose. I can't speak to why they would have that. But but in general, building a reserve in a restricted fund such as motor fuel tax really just takes away from actually actually takes away from our Village position, as as in if we can use restricted funds for operations, let's let's use those funds on those purposes we need to use them for, and then we can set aside unrestricted general fund funds for other things. So it's just kind of a.
Well, I can say from this chair, the some of the changes you've made has have made it much easier to to follow the budget and.
I appreciate that. That's the goal.
Quite a bit easier.
Not done yet?
I know.
Okay, so so proceed?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, then, just to recap, general fund from last committee of the whole meeting, we're going to look at the fund balance again. So that the Village's general fund is projected to finish fiscal year '25 with a fund balance of about $49.6 million, where this is 151% coverage of the annual operating expenses. With this strong reserve in the general fund, we we introduced the concept of executing a one-time transfer from the general fund to the capital fund and the VERF in order to provide a fund balance in those funds, equivalent to three years' worth of scheduled projects and purchases. So just to run through that quickly here, in the middle of this page, you'll see the one-time fund needed for that would be about $11.3 million. And then the items above under the three years, three years of funding cost, this is just coming up with three years of scheduled VERF expenditures and three years of scheduled project capital projects. Down at the bottom, under fund balance impact, we start with the $49.6 million I just mentioned and the 151% coverage. And if we were to make this $11.3 million transfer, we would end the budget year at $38.25 million, or still a coverage ratio of about 116%, which still exceeds the 67% minimum. And and just to clarify, just to clarify, this this would commit these funds, this transfer would commit these funds, not restrict, so meaning these funds can be uncommitted and transferred back to the general fund by any board action. The board is not committing to the future scheduled projects or purchases in these schedules. The actual projects and purchases in any given year will still be formally approved each year in the respective annual budget process. By doing this, you are building a rainy day fund, so next time we do experience an economic downturn, the Village can continue to fund capital items that are necessary to operations without relying on the revenues in the general fund in any given year. And then just to kind of recap, why we settled on that three-year funding criteria is looking at our past revenue, our sales tax revenue, which is our largest revenue. And when we do drop, or during recessions, we have we have gone, our revenues have gone down for multiple years in a row, and they typically have recovered three to four years afterward. So that's kind of how we got to that three-year mark. And then again, this, to conclude, this is how this this transfer would be presented in the budget. So we'd have a net change in fund balance before the one-time capital transfer, so we can show that, you know, we have a budget surplus before this one-time transfer. Then we show the one-time transfer, and then we have a net change in fund balance. And then ultimately, the change in fund balance below, ending the year at $38.3 million. So that being said, I'd like to open it up, wanted to get any additional comments, if there are any thoughts or any any issues since last we spoke on this topic. Or Kevin, if you wanted to add anything to that?
I think that was a good explanation. Thank you, Tom.
Questions or concerns from the board?
Looks good.
Yeah.
Looks very good.
Yeah, we're in good shape.
Nicely funded.
Yep, that's true. Okay, so so really, to to close this whole budget process off, next month, we'll have the public hearing, as Kevin mentioned, on on the April 2nd board meeting, just before the April 2nd board meeting, I should say. And then we'll have the final budget for approval on the April 16th board meeting.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and nothing else on committee of the hall?
That is it for committee of the hall. We will have executive session to discuss personnel.
Executive session for personnel only?
Correct.
Okay. All right, then, is there a motion to adjourn the committee of the hall and go into executive session to discuss personnel? So made.
Second.
A motion of second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markward?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook?
Aye. Motion carries, so we are adjourned, and we will not be conducting any business when we come out from the executive session.